All right. For being present, this meeting is hereby called and ordered. But I ask that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the people of Hamden who worship the same as one nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Just checking the room, do we have any recognitions, presentations, anything for tonight?
Not yet.
Yes, sir. Not over. The town of Hamden has been very fortunate to have a number of people who have given enormous amounts of their time. They were always extremely sad when things changed and for some reason they leave him. We don't know why that is. But there was one person who has served a number of years, a huge number, thirty-six years as a library trustee. And for some reason she feels it's time to leave Hamden. And we are here to recognize what she has done. A resident over half a century, her husband served as Board of Selectmen with my father. You recognize him just before.
I went on board the year Bob went on, in nineteen eighty-seven.
Trained him up.
He did.
So I would like to ask Beth Berger to come up here and accept the award. I didn't, I didn't set this up. Beth, you have been a Harless Town for fifty-plus years. Everybody who knows you, unfortunately not being in front for all your work at the shrine with my mother. People used to say, "I think Beth is the one in the jeans skirt working on the flowers in front." True story, Eric. So, thank you so much for everything. We have a plaque for the citizen of Hamden, Beth Berger. We won't have five minutes more speech, so please.
Both of you who know me well know I just love this town. My husband loved this town, he's been so good to us. Even though one of the labor boys used to call us aliens because we're not from the Midwest. But I've done this with great joy. I'm really proud, beautiful, wonderful, love this town. And the reason that I am not running again is because I'm moving. And that's gonna be real, real hard. But I think it's the time and it will be good for the family. But I just thank you all, it's been wonderful. It's really been wonderful, it's been a wonderful town. And I just, and for my husband, I'd say we transplanted here from the Midwest, but I just love it. Thank you. Thank you.
Party. Rick, you have another one?
Well, no, please, I don't want to make sure.
Party. Oh, wow. All right. So first of all, Beth, John said five minutes, I would have given you ten. Since it's my choice, you can tell what you want. Actually, now I've got glasses to read these things. Join us in celebrating Beth Berger, thirty-six years as a public library trustee. Thursday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, three P M. to six P M. The Hamden Public Library, the Rochford Reading Room, Rochford Peggy Reading Room, six twenty-five Main Street, Hamden, Mass., where refreshments will be served. My only personal note, Beth, is that I did follow your husband on the Board of Selectmen in nineteen eighty-seven. And whoever follows you, the only thing I can hope is that amount of class that Berger's have shown the town of Hamden can be shown by whoever follows you.
Beth?
Yes.
I believe that the lady that is ready for the library trustee is gonna just do something admirable job.
Wow, and I still remember the time my grandmother started to make a political announcement and think the tall are cut her short. So let it be said that I didn't do that to you. Well done. We've got recognitions. We must now read the warrant. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Hamden, qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet at Thornton W. Burgess Middle School, eighty-five Wilberham Road, Hamden, on Monday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven o'clock in the evening, and then to hear and act on the articles included. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting an attested copy thereof at each of the places designated by the town. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk, honor before the time of the meeting before said, given honor under our hands this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. I, Constable for the town of Hamden, have on this date posted copies of the warrant for the town of Hamden to be held on May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P M. In all the places as designated in the town of Hamden. Signed Edward T. Coolen, Constable, date four twenty-seven twenty-three. The warrant being properly served, the formal reading of the warrant is waived, and the posted warrant shall be part of the record. Meeting will begin first with a report or update State of the Union, if you will, from the advisory committee. Carol?
Hi, everyone. My usual State of the Union. Before we go through all the warrant articles, I did want to give you an overview of the advisory committee's process this year and some of the key considerations that you'll find as we go through the articles, particularly related to the town budget. The advisory committee, by the way, is up here. Doug Boyd, Cian Burchian, Heather Turcot, Kathy Passalano is home ill. We make up the five members of the advisory committee. We've been meeting regularly since the end of January on Monday nights down in the Melville Room. Very exciting stuff happening down there. We've asked all the departments to submit a level service budget to ensure that we could continue to provide the quality and variety of services that the town currently delivers to its citizens. And the departments did a great job of providing all the information we needed and were very diligent in bringing us thoughtful and prudent budgets. We also work collaboratively with the town treasurer, the town accountant, town administrator, and the Board of Selectmen throughout our budget process. And in fact, the treasurer and the town accountant were at nearly every one of our advisory meetings and continue to provide invaluable insight and perspective on the town's finances and operations to us. The budget expenditures we're recommending tonight total fifteen million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. That represents a four-point-five percent increase in the operating budget. The advisory committee supports all the line item amounts identified in the budget after spending a lot of time to understand the needs of the departments. In terms of overall budget figures, this year includes an adjustment for our non-bargain town employees. And in our ongoing efforts to ensure that the town, as an employer, maintains competitive wages and is responsive to concerns about inflation, the Board of Selectmen and the advisory jointly discussed and recommended a four percent COLA for this year. So you'll see those salary adjustments in those line items, along with our contractual commitments to other salaries. There are several other factors impacting the budget this year, including some expense increases for our mandatory contribution to county retirement, employee benefits costs that increased due to a change in the town's contribution and an increase in our enrollment. We've got required PFAS testing for the water supply near the transfer station. Next year is a full audit year, so you'll see expenses go up in that area as well. And we have some shared services expenses for Board of Health. In addition, there are a few additional staffing or staffing increase in hours in some departments, including parks and recreation. You'll see the addition of a director at thirty-two hours a week. The senior center director, the fire department clerical, and the principal assessor are also showing increased hours for those roles. You may notice this year, for the first time that I can remember, we didn't have a couple of numbers to fill in in the green sheets that went out. We did not have a final school assessment figure ready to go when we went to print. But we do have one for tonight that we'll share. But I wanted to give you a little context for why that happened and let you know that we've worked jointly with the Wilberham Finance Committee to come to an assessment figure. Doug and I, as well as Maury Ryan, who's our school curriculum committee representative, have been attending the school committee's budget subcommittee and have been meeting with them weekly for several months. And there are also Wilberham Finance Committee representatives there as well. During those meetings, it was clear that Wilberham was gonna have some difficulty supporting a substantial increase in the school assessment. The original operational and capital budget that the school committee ultimately voted posed a major problem for Wilberham. The original Hamden assessment, based on that budget, was not as dramatic and impactful to our final budget figures. But as you may know, there are several factors that play into the school assessment figures, including enrollment. There has been a shift over the last several years so that Hamden students represent just under twenty percent of the total school enrollment, which means that Wilberham's costs have increased proportionally more than ours. There are other state formulas that factor in for minimum local contributions. And the truth is that the funding for regional schools in this state is woefully inadequate. And this year, Wilberham was particularly challenged. And in other years, it's been Hamden. So the advisory committee and the Wilberham Finance Committee, we have a great working relationship and we have a lot of history with each other. And in that spirit, we came together to determine a consensus assessment figure that both towns could support and be presented. And we presented those to the school committee and to the district staff. We asked them to reconsider their first budget, looking at some alternative funding sources and operational efficiencies, as well as a request to handle their capital items in a different timeframe or to support those through other funding means. So in turn, the district reworked their budget and issued both towns new assessment letters. And this resulted in the original request to us being reduced by a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So the new figure which advisories were recommending tonight, which wasn't in your original green sheet, is eight million ninety-three thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Rickle, cheer those again when he goes through the budget. While it was a challenging process at the eleventh hour, it proved to be a really good example of how the towns and the school district can work well together. And I would like to say that Doug was a major driver of pulling the advisory and Wilberham Finance together and really led the effort to have a collaborative and constructive process that avoided some potential complications for each town at their town meetings. It was quite a, quite a work of art. So, and finally, as is typical in our process at the annual town meeting, we anticipate deferring the articles relative to any transfer stabilization and any possible reduction in the tax rate until our fall town meeting. At that time, we'll have a better sense of free cash available from the current fiscal year that can be used for those purposes and can also factor in decisions about potential capital items. The Board of Selectmen, the treasurer, the accountant, and advisory all work collaboratively to make those determinations to ensure that we can prudently finance capital items and stabilize any potential tax increases to the best of our ability. So, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. We do have a few housekeeping items. I actually jumped the gun getting Carol up here because I'm so anxious to have her company. But we've got a few things to, first and foremost, please turn off your cell phones or silence them. This is the most important one to me. Free and open discussion with respect to all you members. To say anything at town meeting takes a little bit of courage. To know that your friends and neighbors may not agree with what you say makes it even more difficult. And it's always important to remember that the people you see here tonight are the people you're gonna see tomorrow. And you wanna be able to wave, smile, look them in the eye, and hopefully make a good day. So please be mindful and respectful of your friends and neighbors. All questions must be addressed through the moderator. Please keep all questions and discussions on point. The question may be moved by a member or moderator subject to a vote and/or the moderator's discretion. Please come to the microphone when asking or answering a question or making a statement. It makes it easier for the clerk to track those who are here. And one last thing, I wanna thank Herb Foley, I think he stepped out of the room. Every year, Herb does a fantastic job getting this room set up so that we can have our meeting here. And Herb's only request of us tonight was, please be sure you leave everything where it is because he has interns coming in tomorrow to put it all away. And apparently, he likes to keep them busy. Okay, now we can get started. Article one, to hear the annual reports of the officers of the town and any committee whose duty it may be to report at said meeting and act thereon or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the annual town reports, as contained in the annual town report for the year two thousand and twenty-two, be accepted as contained.
Sir. We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory committee have any, have a recommendation?
Advisory recommendations, favorable action?
Is there any discussion? I do see a question.
Mr. Moderator, I did not receive my town report, so I will be unable to vote on the reports which I cannot read because the town report is not available to me.
I do understand, or from this afternoon, that there was an issue with the printer, that their reports are not available for the meeting tonight. That said, the town report is a document that looks, is the annual town report, in my opinion, is a document that looks backward. This meeting is a meeting that looks forward. And what we are here to accomplish is, as the town meeting history so aptly structures for us to do, is how we want the community to look going forward. Town meeting reports will be available. They will have a summary of the prior year's operations and what boards have accomplished. That said, there is, there is the discussion. This requires a majority vote to accept the reports, to accept and hear reporting. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The moderator declares a majority. Article two, annual operating budget. To see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elective officers of the town as provided for by section one oh eight of chapter forty-one of the general laws, and to raise and appropriate the necessary sums to cover same and rate to raise money and make appropriations to defray the expenses of the town for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion?
I move that the sums of money shown in the column entitled Fiscal, two thousand twenty-four Draft Recommendations of the supplementary report and recommendations of the advisory committee be raised and appropriated for the specific purposes designated and that the same be expended only for such purposes, each number being considered a separate appropriation and that the town raise and appropriate such sums as may be required to defray said charges for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Does the advisory have a recommendation for their own motion?
They do. The advisory recommends favorable action.
Okay. I am now gonna read to you, for those of you who have your green sheets, I am now gonna read the requested and recommended numbers. I am only gonna do each department's total. I will check the room, so if you do have a question within the account, we will stop so you can ask the question. But again, I'm only gonna be reading the total requested and recommended. General Government, item one, accountant, town accountant, requested seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen, recommended seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Article two, item two, advisory, total advisory, five thousand nine hundred and ninety-one, requested five thousand nine hundred and ninety-one, recommended. Board of Appeals, eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-six, requested eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-six, recommended. Four, assessors, Board of, total assessors, requested one hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-six, recommended one hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. Item five, building and department expenses, total building department, requested one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and eleven, recommended one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and eleven. Six, county retirement, requested seven hundred, seven hundred and nine thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, recommended seven hundred and nine thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. Seven, insurance, total requested seven hundred and fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars, recommended seven hundred and fifty-one thousand seventeen dollars. You doing okay so far? Okay. Item eight, bond claims, ninety-five thousand requested, ninety-five thousand recommended. Moderator, one hundred dollars requested, I didn't actually ask for any, but you're throwing it in. One hundred requested, one hundred recommended. Planning Board, ten, total planning board, thirty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars requested, thirty-nine thousand sixty-five dollars recommended. Eleven, Board of Registars, total registrars, thirteen thousand nine hundred requested, thirteen thousand nine hundred recommended. Selectmen, twelve, total selectmen, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and five requested, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and five recommended. Thirteen, tax collector, total tax collector, eighty-seven thousand nine eighty-seven requested, eighty-seven thousand nine eighty-seven recommended. Fourteen, town clerk, total town clerk, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars requested, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars recommended. Town report, three thousand six hundred dollars requested and recommended. Sixteen, treasurer, total treasurer, eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one recommended, requested the same number, eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one recommended. Veterans benefits, seventeen, twenty thousand requested, twenty thousand recommended. Nineteen, town administrator, one hundred thousand requested, one hundred thousand recommended. Total general government, two million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars requested, two, two million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars recommended. Any questions, you doing okay still? Okay, we'll keep it moving. General Town Services, twenty, Academy Hall agents, four thousand five hundred requested and the same amount recommended. Twenty-one, Cemetery Commission, total cemetery commission, forty thousand one hundred and twenty-two requested, forty thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars recommended. Twenty-two, Conservation Commission, total Conservation Commission, forty thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars requested, forty thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars recommended. Transfer Station, item twenty-three, was there a question?
Yes, I do have one, I'm sorry. I'm walking you up now. Back on the Cemetery Commission, I'm just curious as to, is it open for four hours, four days a week? Is that what that schedule is?
Is there anybody here from the Cemetery Commission who submitted the budget number? If not, does the advisory committee have a, no, no?
The question was four days a week. The town of, town of all offices are open over the four days a week.
Okay, does that help you? They're open, they're open, maybe not as many hours, but at least, at least the same days the townhouse is open.
Just seems binding words is not any better than twenty years ago when I reached you. And I was curious as to what the job details.
Yep. I don't believe we have a Cemetery Commission here. I don't see anybody. So that might be something you take up with them separately. I understand the question, it's reasonable, but within the context of the budget. Okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Nope, you're absolutely welcome. So please, let's, let's repeat Cemetery Commission, just make sure. Forty thousand one hundred and twenty-two recommended, requested, same amount requested and recommended. Twenty-two, Conservation Commission, total Conservation Commission, for, oh, we've done this, I'm sorry, but we'll keep going. Forty thousand five ninety-nine requested, forty thousand five ninety-nine recommended. Transfer Station, total Transfer Station, one hundred thousand requested, one hundred thousand dollars recommended.
Good night.
Yes, sir. I said, Peter, why don't you go, so we'll keep it in order? He was first, okay. And could you please state your name?
Eric Blake, Main Street.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what's the reason for the jump? PFAS, PFAS testing.
This, this is related to the PFAS testing that I referred to earlier, required testing on the water supply.
On the dollar bill. So just in, in short, you know, when the landfill was kept and closed back in ninety-three and converted to a transfer station, from before that even happened, water testing was required and it's been ongoing in different forms or fashions for the last thirty years. And this is a new test being required by the state. Peter, you still have a question, or are you good?
I'm up in the data page, where they're mandatory.
You've, you've stumbled onto the hornet's nest of the man here. And it's a beautiful thing to pass the law, it's another thing to fund it, and they seem to do very little over the second. School building repairs, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Was there anybody else, or are we good now? Connie?
Connie Whit, Main Street. Does this have anything to do with the solar system that's the current?
The answer is no.
And Rick?
Hold it, stick, please.
As a clarification, none of this money from this account goes to the operations of the transfer station. It's strictly the mandatory testing. And that went up because of this PFAS by the town. Has nothing to do with the operations, that's all funded out of a revolving enterprise fund from the bag sales.
And if you, if you do note, the only line included inside of twenty-three is twenty-three-two monitoring testing, so it is monitoring testing alone. Twenty-four, school building repairs, fifteen thousand requested, fifteen thousand dollars recommended. Twenty-six, library, total library, one hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars requested, one hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars recommended. Town events, four thousand five hundred requested, four thousand five hundred recommended. Office equipment, total office equipment, ninety thousand dollars requested, ninety thousand dollars recommended. Still doing okay? Okay. Item thirty, parks and recreation, total parks and recreation, one hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars requested, one hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars recommended.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir, Peter. Peter, how?
I'm just curious, how come we needed now a director for the Park and Rec Department now? We never needed that one before, why are we creating this entity?
Do we have somebody from Park and Rec? I see, yes, please.
Hi, my name's Terry Ford, I'm someone's, um, I've been a park director, on the park director board for seven, not the last ten years. During that course of time, the Parks Department essentially has two employees. We have a part-time administrative assistant, who's in office, and we have a maintenance person who's in the park. All of the directors are, are volunteer positions, volunteers, we all have our jobs and our positions over the last seventy years or so. Our offerings are being limited. This is our first year that we weren't even able to field a baseball team for Hamden. We're becoming heavily reliant upon reaching out to other towns or assistants and employees. And, and we're struggling, we are really struggling to keep the viability to our programs. Now, it's not just programs for kids. We do run out of other programs for, first grade, actually from kindergarten up to eighth grade. And then there's also some programs for, no, there's, there's also basketball, there's pickleball. We also maintain the park facilities. We have Memorial Park, which is, you know, limited in size. It's a wonderful little park, but it's small. And there's limited opportunities to expand and do anything else there. We do also have TWD. If that could be put to use, that would be great benefits in the town. And right now, there's two baseball fields, but there's something going on. There is a basketball court that is in desperate need of repair. So we really need a person who is gonna develop themselves on a full-time position, not only to develop additional programs, to hopefully expand our offerings not only locally among the kids, but on adult programs and also to reach out and work with other communities to be more offering. Our sports programs are basically basketball, soccer. Our sports programs are basically basketball, um, soccer, and baseball. This year, we don't even have a baseball program where our kids have to play, you know, whatever, playing bowling on the table. And the hope is, we get a person who will be full-time, who's available on weekends, who's available on nights, who's able to write grants, who can raise the budget by grant writing and offer more to the adults and the kids. Because at some point, we're trying to water, but we're forsaken too. You know, we're getting to that point where it's retiring out, we're just trying to, it's actually going to be hit.
Okay. If we, all right, I was gonna say, I'm not, think that would, whether you agree or not, at least you gotta answer your question. You good to go, Peter?
I did agree with the program, but there's nothing urgent involved, but I thought you got now, it would be.
Like the way you think. Thirty, let me, let's just hit the total again. Total parks and recreation, $132,290 requested, $132,290 is the recommended number. Townhouse maintenance, 32. Total townhouse maintenance, $87,000 requested, $87,000 recommended. Thirty-four, ambulance. $363,878 requested, $363,878 recommended. Item thirty-five, gasoline. Total gasoline. $60,000 is requested and it is also the recommended amount. Street lighting. Item thirty-six, $30,000 requested, $30,000 recommended. Thirty-seven, council on aging. Total council on aging. $199,990 requested, $199,990 recommended. Thirty-eight, senior center. Total senior center. $40,181 requested, $40,181 recommended. Line, uh, line thirty-nine, historical commission. $400 is the requested and recommended amount. Total general town services. $1,404,238 requested, $1,404,238 recommended. All set so far? And Ohio Department? Superintendent salary. $101,379 recommended, is requested and the same amount is recommended. Departmental payroll. $289,736 requested, $289,736 recommended. Tree ward. Total, line forty-one, tree ward and total tree ward. $60,270 requested, $60,270 recommended. Item forty-two, public grounds. $4,385 is the requested and recommended amount. Looks like we're still good. Line forty-three, highway maintenance. Total highway maintenance. $315,672 requested, $315,672 recommended. Item forty-four, general highway expense. $18,300 requested and the same amount has been recommended. Item forty-five, snow and ice removal. $100,000 is the requested and $125,000 is the recommended amount. Item forty-six, total is contract services. Total contract services. $63,700 requested, $63,700 recommended. Item forty-seven, other highway accounts. $21,000 requested, $21,000 recommended. Item forty-eight, building expense. $16,250 requested, $16,250 recommended. Total highway department. $990,692 requested, $1,015,692 recommended. Looks like we're still okay. Protection of persons and property. Item fifty, animal inspector. Total animal inspection, I'm sorry, animal inspection, total animal inspection. $5,877 requested, $5,877 recommended. Item fifty-one, emergency management. $4,900 requested, $4,900 recommended. Item fifty-one point five, traffic control. $15,000 is the requested and the recommended amount. Item fifty-two, dog officer. Total dog officer. $14,629 requested, $14,629 recommended. Line fifty-three, fire department. $403,854 requested, $403,854 recommended.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Give your hand again.
Yep.
Why doesn't the fire department need a work for an individual $10,000 a month a year?
Is someone here to address that? Or? I see the chief.
The fire department wants to save extra funds for Jane Nix, which she's our person to charge now. She's retiring and, um, January 1st. But we're going to replace her. She's all here for a lot of hours. Unfortunately, we don't expect why someone who's involved in, um, she's on a hard time. So it's going to be more ask than respond.
My opinion is it should be more elevated to the full-time staff, the fire department, when they have a lot of downtime. They can take over a lot of it, we can take them out. Because they were hired to charge money.
Okay. Okay, let's, uh, stay on the civil tone. The questions asked and answered. Any more discussion on that line? Item fifty-four, horse fire control. $1,800 requested, $1,800 recommended. Item fifty-six, board of health. Total board of health. $101,213 requested, $101,213 recommended. Item fifty-six point five, water district. Total water district. $14,000 requested and $14,000 is the recommended number. Line item fifty-seven, police. Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, could you state your name, please?
Jacqueline Ford here.
Okay.
I'm wondering what the water district means to me. I had to have my well tested, the well water. And when I spoke to town hall, I was on my own. So when you're talking about water district and testing, what's the water district?
So what I can tell you is from firsthand experience. When we closed the landfill, part of the issue of the landfill closure was contaminated wells around the landfill. And we had to establish a public water supply to support those homes. In the last few years, the water district, the area covered by it has expanded to include a few more homes that were affected by salt contamination. And the water district budget is, the entire town is not sub-serviced, serviced by public water. But as a requirement of our agreement with the state back in 93 and as of today, we do have a water district for the homes serviced by public water. And this is the cost of running that district.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Right, guys good with that? Total, police, so we'll do total police. $1,494,967 requested, $1,494,967 recommended. Other police accounts. Item fifty-eight, total fifty of line fifty-eight. $1,823 requested, $1,823 recommended. Total police. $1,496,790 requested, $1,496,790 recommended. Line fifty-nine.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Would you have one for her again?
Sure.
The fire department, I'm hearing a lot of mentioning of additions to the fire station or building a new one, is that, it's not here?
That wouldn't be in that number. These are the operational numbers. So anything that's related to construction, additions, repairs to the buildings would be separate warrant questions, if any pertain. But as a rule, those type of questions for any department are not contained inside the operating budget. Fifty-eight, we did. Fifty-nine, police-fire communications. $27,245 requested, $27,245 recommended. Total protection. $2,085,308 requested, $2,085,308 is the recommended number. Now on to line sixty-nine, schools. Regional school district. Total regional school district. This number is not in your green sheets, as Carol let you know, but that number has been provided. And that number is $8,093,356. Local government, uh, local government debt, excuse me. Line seven, total local government debt. $691,588 is the requested and it is also the recommended amount. The grand total, you'll see the requested number being $15,959,639, with the total recommended number, $15,829,566. Any questions? This will require a majority vote, is on the annual operating budget. All those in favor of passing the budget? Are there any opposed? This looks unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, one, it was majority. Prior year bills. To see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of any departmental bills of fiscal year 2022 or previous years, and will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town take no action or desire to.
And the motion, we have a second. Advisory have a recommendation on no action?
Advisory recommends no action.
A no action article simply requires a majority vote. Any, is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, unlike most of us, I'm pleased to inform the county you have no prior year bills. I'd like to rest of this.
That may be your only comment on the question. This would require a majority vote. All those in favor of no action? Are there any opposed? I would see that as unanimous. Question four, fiscal 2024 spending limits for revolving funds. To see if the town will vote to authorize the following total expenditures for each of the following revolving funds pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, to be extended in accordance with the bylaws heretofore approved or take any other action relative thereto. The funds in question are: Building Department Fund, $85,000; Cemetery Commission Fund, $30,000; Council on Aging Fund, $21,000; Library Fund, $3,000; Conservation Commission Fund, $25,000; Planning Board Fund, $10,000. All the details, I'm sorry. It's under the paper. Board of Health Fund, $20,000.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the following total expenditures for the following revolving funds with amounts not to exceed the listed amounts pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three and a half, for the fiscal year 2024. Building Department Fund, $85,000; Cemetery Commission Fund, $30,000; Council on Aging Fund, $21,000; Library Fund, $3,000; Conservation Commission Fund, $25,000; Planning Board Fund, $10,000; Board of Health Fund, $20,000.
We have a motion, we have a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the revolving fund question? One down front.
Jacqueline, for her again, about the Conservation Commission Fund. Please explain that to me. What does that do? Are we buying a property to make it a nice park here, or what is that about?
It's actually a recovery of property. We'll get to that later, but department. We have expenses that are temporary. We have to hire our contractors and respect the piece of property, something like that. It's money in and out, it doesn't cost you tax or anything. It's temporary holding, it's allowing money to flow in and out, I mean, not buying anything. It's the same for every department.
This is not like we bought and go.
No, it has nothing to do with that.
All right, conservation.
It's bigger than your home budget, where you're holding temporary.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the revolving fund article requires a majority vote. Is there any more discussion? Seeing problems, have a question?
I have a question, because I heard about the, can you just explain a little bit how this revolving, how these funds operate? Like, they're already raised and funded, they're in a revolving account, in and out?
So this is, this is money that's outside of the operating budget. This is, this allows the departments mentioned either to collect fees, whether they be bag fees, permit fees. So it allows the money to be collected, puts it in a holding place until the money is spent. So, does it contribute to the operations of each of the departments? Yes, it does. But it is solely to collect receipts that come in, as opposed to tax revenues that come in. It holds it until it's needed for expenditure. Okay? Anybody else? I got the nod of approval from the treasurer. Don't forget to go. There you go. All right. Seeing all the questions are taken care of, uh, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? All unanimous. Article five, enterprise fund transfer station. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of money to fund the operations of the transfer station from the estimated income to be derived in fiscal year 2024, transfer station operations, the tax levying, a transfer from available funds, including the retained earnings of relevant enterprise fund, or from any combination of these methods or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following amounts for the transfer station. $34,740 and 67 cents for salaries. $64,194 and 54 cents for trash hauling and road contract. $1,650 for miscellaneous expenses. And that a total of $105,852.21 be raised from the transfer station enterprise fund receipts.
So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion on the question? Seeing no, well, I see a question. Peter?
Uh, so where your money comes from the solar field, is that going to offset the transfer taking funds?
No, this is strictly for hauling and recycling.
Money coming in towards the solar field, is that going to offset the funds at the transfer station? So, is that a standard thing?
My, my understanding, and, if you want to take this, Dick, please, go ahead.
There, no, if you did that, then you'd spend the money without your approval. All the money that we get rent from the solar field goes into general income so that we can appropriate it for the next town meeting. Otherwise, it'd be a revolving fund, such fund situation, and you wouldn't want that, Peter.
No, I agree.
Yeah, so, so the answer is that that money goes directly into the general fund and is not allocated for operation. It can actually use for other departments. Okay?
Not on paper, but that's all right.
Good. All right. Without any other questions, this also requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on article six, community preservation. Community Preservation Action Committee. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from community preservation annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal, fiscal year 2024. With each item to be considered a separate appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. It should be pointed out, there are, if you're looking at your warrant, there are two separate motions that will be entertained here after the CPA folks make a brief presentation. The first motion is to see if the town will vote to appropriate $63,300 from the Community Preservation Fund for the purchase of a 13.7-acre parcel at Zero Walnut Road for conservation purchases by the Minnetoga Land Trust or take any other action relative thereto. The second motion, a separate motion and a separate vote, would be to see if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 from the Community Preservation Fund for the purchase of adaptive playground equipment at the Green Meadows School by the Hampton Wolverham Regional School District or take any other action relative thereto. Motion, or report?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate $63,300 from the Community Preservation Fund for the purchase of a 13.7-acre parcel at Zero Walnut Road for conservation purposes by the Minnetoga Land Trust or take any other action relative thereto.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation of this motion?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Anything you want to say?
Let me just advise town meeting that the Community Preservation Fund, as of last month, we had five hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and forty dollars. These two articles tonight combined were one hundred and eighty thousand three hundred dollars. So, the adequate funds, as people are, most people are aware, the CPA funds have already been raised and appropriated. This one is already in the bank.
Any discussion on the question? John Matthews.
What are you going to use land for?
Probably for hiking, John. This parcel, this parcel of what's the existing Minnetoga Land Parcel. And it comes down to the river and is right at the end of Walnut Road, Walnut Street. So, it's a contiguous piece of property that, as I say, funds the river as well.
It's valued at seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars, right? What we're doing is we're taking this land off our cash walls now. So, I'll grant you that we're going to lose one thousand two hundred nineteen dollars a year. Maybe not much. We just spent a ton of money, eight million or whatever, for our budget. If we keep doing this, because if I'm correct, community preservation, the focus is on to the majority of the money goes to buying land for open space. The second thing, I believe, is for, what we're going to vote on the second item, I believe, okay? And the third thing would be for low-income housing. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Actually, there's a fourth category that's added in, which is recreation.
Okay. So, this parcel of land is.
Hold on, Connie, let him finish. Let him finish, Connie. Please, Connie.
Okay. So, this parcel of land, I agree, it does a lot of other Minnetoga Land Trust land already. At the end of, I'm going to say Hickory Lane, there's a path there. The land, this land is net, is in national heritage all over. So, I'm not sure how we can do this, whatever, if you're going to make a walking trail. I don't think you could put a parking lot there. Also, the elevator is yeah, it's steep. I mean, it's steep. So, is the best use of the community preservation land. That's the big question I have. The other one is, I'm not big on buying land because what it does is it puts more emphasis on the taxpayers because we have budgets that keep going up. We keep taking land off of the taxpayers. That's my big problem.
Fair enough. Hold on, one second before you go. Gary, Connie, you started to say something. Please, through the moderator.
Yes, but besides those uses, it's also used for historic preservation. The town has used that in the past, and as our townhouse needs great repair, it is eligible to use those funds to do the white work with that kind of historic preservation and already done so.
Okay, Gary, you remind me.
Just a question. Did we get an appraisal?
The Land Trust did. Is somebody here from the Land Trust?
Hi, no, that means I'm here from the representative of the Land Trust. We did get an assessment, and the town, through the town moderator, decided that we could use the assessment instead of the appraisal for the land. If we were to do an appraisal, we'd spend extra a ton of money, and the appraisal would be the appraisal would come out higher than the assessed.
All right, so for formulaic purposes, the moderator didn't have anything to do with that. I don't get to play in that sandbox. So, whatever, so there was apparently an appraisal on the value, but Gary, please, you had to follow up, so go ahead.
Yeah, if I could follow up. You should be assessing value through the moderator, through town. I question whether or not anybody really bought that land as an appraisal. Because as John has indicated, anybody has, it's great for hiking, wonderful hiking. But in terms of value other than the hiking, in fact, we've got endangered species issues there. I believe that value of that land would be substantially less than what we're in favor.
Well, let me do this before you went. So, let me just reiterate. Moderator is harsh on it. So, the moderator had nothing to do with any appraisal of land, the value of it. Like I said, I don't get to play in that sandbox. So, as long as we're good there. Doug, do you want to follow up on that? Are you good?
Well, just acknowledge that that issue of development versus, you know, preservation, conservation comes up, you know, every time a piece of property comes available. And I know the Land Trust does not bring, they don't attempt to purchase each piece of property. They brought them to their attention, they're selective in terms of which properties they bring to town meeting. And one of those items that they focus on is, you know, the heritage aspect of it, but also how it fits into the overall scheme that the town has. And if you look at the map, I mean, the Minnetoga Parcel, it's a fruit-sized piece of land these days. This is immediately contiguous to it. This will expand that without having any significant impact on any of the neighboring properties, essentially what you're thinking of the way it is. And I think there's a value to that. I understand taking this developing property off of the tax rules, this expenditure is one that I believe is worthwhile in the long run.
All right, yeah.
Hold on, before you do. Seth?
Yes.
By all means.
So, when you look at this parcel of property, and there is another seventy-two thousand dollars. One of the implications was that this piece of land has such a secret and the way that the land accesses that hold this out there at the end of Walnut Road, the owner of the property, you have to ask for a right-of-way from the neighboring property to have a driveway going to that section. So, we were able to negotiate this down to that point.
One more, Gary.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, but it's four.
Yeah. I'm not opposed in theory to the acquisition of the parcel. What I believe, though, is the value that we're paying for is beyond the parcel for you can argue hooking up with the rest of the Minnetoga lands that we already own. But in terms of dollars and cents, why, years ago, looked at that for the owner, and it was decided that it was not builtable and that there were, you know, severe restrictions because of grade and because of access. For that reason, it's sat there, and the seventy-three thousand dollar assessment, I think, is just a little bit way beyond what that parcel for.
All right, I'm going to exercise moderator, oh, John.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to exercise moderator prerogative and move this question.
I have a question about the.
Hold on, now that you said that, there's two. We'll take, all right, so let's take, we'll take two more. Let's try and be fair here. I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is Sturber, fifteen month of year drive. I didn't know if you were going to address section B about forty-five thousand.
That's natural.
Okay, stop.
Second motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to point it to another question. Yes?
My name is Chris Forman. I'm still in the office. If you buy this land, you bought it with taxpayers' money. What do you communicate to the taxpayer that it's available for their use?
Well, the woman sitting right next to you is the person that can answer that. She's with the Land Trust.
I've been here ten years, and I'm not aware of these properties you're talking about. And their use.
The Minnetoga Land Trust does have a website, minnetogattrust.org, where we post all of our properties. We do have signs around at the, of all of our properties. There are town maps that are available, which we would adjust, not town maps, sorry, trail maps that we would adjust to include this portion of property within the Minnetoga Land Trust conservation area. And there's usually signs and strip places.
So, is your site linked with the, on the site?
We are linked to the town site currently, but if you look up the Minnetoga Land Trust's tool or if you go to the web, it does have one word right there.
They suggest in the future.
Point noted, and the powers that be to my right are the IT people, or are part of the IT consortium. That's it. Are we good here, John?
I got to tack one more thing. The town already owns more than four hundred and fifty acres. Of that, almost four hundred of it is not, I'm going to say, there's no talent building on, okay? So, for those people that don't know, we already own quite a bit of land.
All right. So, at this stage, we're going to move the question. To make this purchase at the number prescribed, requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Onto motion number two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate forty-five thousand dollars for the Preservation Fund for the purchase of adaptive playground equipment at the Green Meadows School by the Hampden-Wilberham Regional School District or to take any other action relative thereto.
Second, we have a second. We do have a second. There's motion, second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Anything you want to say?
Only unless there's any questions. I think it's really self-explanatory.
Are there any questions? I see one, please. I see another one. Hold on, Connie.
Yes, this is Sturber, team on the drive. I'm interested in some details on this project. What equipment is going to be added in? There are two playgrounds at Green Meadows, and one is the early childhood head playground. That's the PKK, and then the other one is from first grade class. So, I'm curious as to what's going to be added.
Well, it's a it's a twenty, a capacity for twenty children, and it's a glider seat. So, it's actually a low-sloped platform with a range which goes up to it and a couple of mold and seats. So, kids with limited mobility are able to get onto the platform and possibly into the seats if they want to. And the plan, I believe, the school, we did a plan, is to put adjacent to existing playground.
And by that, do you mean the one we can carry for the one off the back?
The one off the back.
I would, thank you.
I thought it was another question, Connie. Please, go ahead.
Can I ask the advisory committee, please, if this is the entire price for this or is this Hampton's share?
Now, this is the entire price. As a matter of fact, this is a couple thousand dollars more than the quoted installation figure. The quote was from, I believe, January or February. But it is an all-in figure, and this is entirely hand and money in for Green Meadows. There's a, the school district has made a comparable request to the Wilberham Community Preservation Committee for a piece of equipment at one of their elementary schools as well.
Okay, so each town is paying for their own.
Yep.
School.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this will require a majority vote is law. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on article seven, Conservation Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for the Conservation Fund. Said fund to be used for the purpose of acquiring available land for the town of Hampton for conservation purposes if said purchase is voted upon and approved at the annual or special town meeting prior to such purchase or take any other action relative thereto. Do you understand?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate one thousand dollars for the Conservation Fund. Said fund to be used for the purpose of acquiring available land for the town for conservation purposes if said purchase is voted and approved at an annual town or special town meeting prior to said purchase. Second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Advisory, have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion on the question? This is the annual question every year where we decide whether or not to put a thousand dollars into a side fund for the eventual, potential, potential annual purchase of conservation land. I do, I see two. Please, first, go ahead.
We just voted on sixty-three thousand to go for conservation with the prior article, and I wonder if this is redundant, I mean, Conservation Fund, Conservation Fund. And to the lady who's involved with that, I admire what you're trying to do, but maybe love it. Know that it's a piece of garbage land, and why would you pay so much, like, for all of them, ten thousand, and thank you?
You're welcome. It is a separate issue, so, but it's okay. You're allowed. We're good. But that should end that. I did see a question over here. Before I go, Peter, hold on. Rita.
How much money is in it?
Do the advisory committee have the number?
Twenty. There's currently twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in the Conservation Trust.
Okay. And Peter?
Are we appropriating or transferring?
It'll be raised and appropriate. The warrant, I think, left the option open, but the motion. But the motion was to raise and appropriate, if I'm not mistaken.
It says and.
Yep, so we're going off of the motion, not off the warrant question. The motion was raised and appropriate. Are we, okay? That said, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hearts. Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article eight, chapter ninety, state highway. To see if the town will vote to accept a sum of money from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with chapter ninety, section thirty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws and the Transportation Department's chapter ninety guidelines, and be allowed to borrow in anticipation of reimbursement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, will the town accept two hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the General Laws, chapter ninety, section thirty-four, and be allowed to borrow in anticipation of one hundred percent reimbursement?
Second, we have a second. So, we do have a motion, we have a second. The advisory committee, do you have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Any discussion? This is our annual question where we accept the state offering of money, tax revenue, whatever you'd like to refer to it as, and also we are allowed to borrow in anticipation of that money coming in. Any questions? Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote, simply because borrowing may be involved. So, again, it's two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the question? Any opposed? The motion carries. Article nine, library state aid. To see if the town, to see if the town will vote that in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, if state aid for the Hampden Library is received, this money will be made available to the library trustees for use at their discretion or take any other action relative thereto.
I need that the town vote that in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, if state aid is received for the Hampden Public Library, this money may be made available to library trustees for use at their discretion.
We've got a motion, we have a second. Advisory, have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion to be had? Okay, this does not require, this requires only a majority vote. There's no borrowing involved. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to article ten. Tree stump removal. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to reimburse the Minnetoga Land Trust for grinding stumps that remained after the previously approved removal of dead or dying trees at the South Road Engines to the Minnetoga Mountain Conservation Land or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have somebody to make the motion?
I'm going to talk with the trust. I move to see the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to ring or to the town with the trust for grinding stumps that remain.
All right, hold on, this, hold on. No, no, relax. It's okay. Look at it. You're taking a shot here. It'll be all right. The motion cannot be two parts. So it's either raised and appropriate or transferred. Um, my understanding is it's raised and appropriate. So Dick, if you're going to give her a hand, that's okay? Thank you.
I got it now. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $3,200 to fund removal of tree stumps at South Road Entrance to Minnetok Mountain Conservation Land.
There you go, you got it. Look, all you gotta do is keep trying, we're here with you. So, we've got a motion, I know I heard a second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion? John Matthews, go ahead.
No, honestly. Um, what did we do last, um?
Last fall.
Last fall.
So, so last fall, there was a question on the warrant about a removal of trees. And at the time that was done, the tree work was already done. So we passed the money to reimburse for the tree expense. The same night they did, the land trust folks did make a request for the stump grinding money and we, we refused, saying that since that work had not been done yet, they were not going to authorize that money until we were presented with a question. So this is the follow-up to that.
Did this come into parts because to get around not having to go out?
No, 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 no. And John, just, because it's clear, it's important for the vote. Um, it, it came in two parts, simply because they had done the tree work ahead of time. But we felt that the amount being requested, the work had been done, it was verifiable, it was well within parameter. So it wasn't split up any other reason, except this work had not been done the night of special town meeting and we were not going to authorize funds to be expended until they had a bid and set to do the work, the work had been approved ahead of time. Okay? Nope, fair question. Any more discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Larry Lake there. I love that area. But I'm wondering, it's not going to be developed, won't come down to the new stuff?
Yeah. The, the stuff's, the, how to say? We have volunteers that help to hang that view. So if this stuff were buried in the ham bone, hang, hang it.
I'm playing a lawyer neighbor.
And because all the Indian poppers where they are, everything was growing up and over stone wall, there were trees that were falling down into the road. So, um, I didn't do that. I figured I would keep it so that the trees wouldn't fall and actually have that broken. But that were all the nation that is.
Okay. Peter's question is answered. John, anybody else have a question in regard to this? Okay, this again requires a majority vote of the $3,200, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. We are on to Article 11. Fire truck renovation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to recondition fire engine number two, a 2002 International Fire Truck, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion. I move that the town vote raise and appropriate $10,000 for our car renovation.
Second. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion on the question? I am not seeing any, so we'll vote right to the vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Well, like you had an easiest of everybody so far. Article 12, Funding to Maintain the Town's Defibrillators. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to maintain the town's 12 defibrillators or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $5,820 for required maintenance on the town's 12 defibrillators.
Second. Took you some effort to get that, but remember bidding with the importance? You may need it, you're going to need that defibrillator. We've got a motion, kidding aside, we had a motion, we have a second?
Second.
I did hear. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article 13, Local Match for a Grant for the Fire Department Forestry Truck. For a fire department forestry truck. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money as to the local match for a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to purchase a new forestry truck or take any other action relative thereto. Second, do you have?
Was there an article in the law?
Um, wait a minute. That was the defibrillators. So no, we did defibrillators, we're on to the match for your truck. One of us is slowing down, it could well be me, but you take a shot.
Mr. Moderator, I made a motion to, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $10,559.39 for buying local town for human grant through this fire department's 1953 forestry.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Is there any discussion? I'm not seeing, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you indulge me, the town chief Connor? Does the historical commission of a wild moose retiring, a 70-year-old fire forest truck?
I'm getting pressured, man.
70 years old.
70 years old, man.
You should have taken better care of it, it would have lasted longer.
Oh, no, you, look, don't start this. Go, Will, you're up.
Perhaps we could restore a musical parade.
That has been done in the past and you may see it again. So, but again, there's, straight to the point though, there's no more question? I'm sorry, there is?
Do we have the fire chief explain the grant? Down support?
Fair enough. We've got a request from the board of selectmen for the fire chief to explain the grant. And it might be because you've done something good, I hope.
No, I thank you. So our grant we were awarded to replace our bus truck that we have now is $230,000. Our deputy chief broke the grant, we have a great truck company that's been working hard building the new truck, which should be placed in court soon. But $230,000 was a grant our cost at town was worth of $10,953. Um, and via, you know, off-road, diesel equipment that's probably going to be off the day.
Okay, so you've got an explanation. Now, are there, in addition to, any other questions? I do see a question down front.
I'd like to know how often we use the forestry, the fire truck? And what's the difference between that and a regular, it's a four-wheel drive thing or?
Well, it's got off-road capability, but I'm going to let the guy above my pay grade tell you that.
Yeah, so it's built with bigger tires, tire rocking around, so, you know, we are ready.
So you're going to stop forest fires?
Yeah, they will be just for forest fires, but we're filling it so it can get back up to the water hole. Water hole is a section of water supply, so if there was structural fire, we'd need water for something else and maybe the truck that, well, not the truck that we have, bored out of the viable or out of town. And it could be a good business, right? Or we need a second, um, watch, and set, use this room instead of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
Hi, I just got a question. If we get the new truck, is it going to be able to tow the fire trucks up the street?
Let me tell you, if you can't have fun, that's the point. Alright. Without any additional question or comment, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. We are now on Article 14, New Dump Truck for the Highway Department. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to purchase a new dump truck with a plow or take any other action relative thereto.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $222,465 for the highway department to replace a 1993 Mack dump truck.
So we've got a motion that has been made and seconded. Advisory recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Does, any discussion, questions? Do you want to say anything about the truck?
No.
Uh, we're going to, the Highway Department wants to replace a 1993 Mack dump truck. It has 118,277 miles on it. Over the last few years, we've spent $15,000 in repairs on it. Um, it's, and the truck is, it could be a standard Mack dump truck, stainless steel body and a plow. Um, we're going to attempt to put it on the state auction and probably receive $12,000 to $15,000 for this one.
Okay. See, any, no questions, no comment, any additional? Seeing none, this is a majority vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Article 15, Funding for the Master Plan. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to provide additional funding for use by the master plan committee to update the Hammond Master Plan or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $57,500 to the planning board for the purpose of updating the town.
Second. A motion has been made in the second to raise and appro, raise and appropriate. Does the advisory have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Does any, any question, discussion? The master plan folks want to make a bit of a report? Um, sorry, dollar amount again?
$57,500.
$57,000?
$57,500.
They didn't give it to me for the, for my records, so thank you, you got it? Okay, thanks. Do you folks have any kind of a, anything you want to say?
Well, I would say that we've already received a grant of $75,000. So this is the additional funds that we will use to engage a consultant to help us with the development of the town's master plan. The current plan is 40 years old and really not useful for the type of work that the planning board and other members of town committees might want to look to with this anxiety. We're looking forward to having something as current. And we believe we've got a consulting firm that is well regarded. We met with him and also sought out representatives for the town. So I think I'll write that for argument's sake.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Patel.
I would encourage you to vote against this. Originally, they got a grant for $75,000 for the master plan. And the, with all the money, the government money that's been flowing down, all the consultants are jacking their prices way up. Despite the grandiose title of a master plan, the master plan is basically a zoning and land use guideline. And it has value for a town that has immature zoning, uh, where they haven't established where the districts are yet. Hammond is not in that situation. And basically, if, uh, maybe our zoning needs a little tweaking in what the rules are, but we don't need an overall plan at this point. In 35 years that I've been telling government, nobody has ever said to me, I don't know the answer to that, let me look at the master plan and see what they recommend. There's a reason why it hasn't been pulled out of the door, because it is not a very useful document. It was bad enough when we were talking about spending grant money, which is our money, but to put this kind of money on the tax rate for a document that no one's ever going to use for any legitimate purpose makes no sense to me. Thank you.
Phil Snyder?
I just want, uh, Phil Snyder, Raymond Drive. I'd just like to point out that we've already spent, I believe it's $370,000 above what we gave for the budget. So, I mean, this will make it more and order, we still got money to go, so. No, just, just a little caution to the window.
I see, yes, I do, Jason, way in the back.
Jason, also, uh, I'm not sure where, uh, the previous speaker got his information as far as master plan not being needed for towns that don't have or not, and want to use it for towns that are immature zoning. I'm not saying the state recommends updating the master plan every five to 10 years.
Jason? Hold one second. Everybody hear him, okay?
No.
Jason, could you just come up and, your, your point seems to be important, so.
Sorry about that, folks, any better?
Yes.
I'm not sure where the previous speaker got his information. The state recommends updating the master plan every five to 10 years. It is not something that's needed for immature zoning towns. It's also, $132,000 is $7,000 more than the town of Mudville spent in 2010 to update their master plan. So to say that consultants are jacking their prices a complete lie, that is, that is what.
Careful with the choice of words, please.
That is what it costs to put the effort into this sort of proposal. They have 24 Zoom calls with a consultant. They've got three all-day, uh, all-day working sessions that they're planning to have for the whole town. And they have an additional six planning board meetings plus drafting this document. If folks think that that level of effort is not commensurate with $132,000, I'm not sure where you get consultants that do work for less than that.
Fair enough. Again, just a caution. We all have opinions, we also, and the vast majority of us, I'm sure, have substantial information behind it, so let's be aware of each other, okay? Um, and Jason has always been a rock-solid guy, so just go from there. Yes, sir?
My question is, if we spend this money, what is it going to do for us for return on investment?
I can speak to that. As a new planning member this year, as a DPN, working as a local authority in the town, I knew there was master plans that required, it is required by state law that towns have master plan. So I looked at the town and it's difficult to find and it's 40 years old. So some of the relevant topics that we were talking about, we've been very helpful at current community, which is really a lot of our topic. This master plan is built on inputs from the community. So we hope to be able to use it as a reference point and we come up with topics that are important, of course they all are. We would have been very helpful in some of our deliberations to have something as current, that would have said in the last five to 10 years, this is the way the town thought about this. This would have been sensible. And to be honest, and if the assumptions built into the plan are straightforward as well, the existing plan predicted the town would have $70,000 people running out. Right, or under $5,000. So we need to have something that's current, a reference point, so we can make better decisions. I think it's worth to invest $132,000, very older, 10 or 15 years. Isn't that a turn on your investment, right? So I think it's worth spending 10 or so thousand dollars a year to get something that is reliable, that's a cool career, and for other members.
Can I get one example of what can we, what specifically?
Yeah. Well, Jason, you should have experienced all that in your life.
Yeah, let's get one example, I just, okay.
So just to think back on, on the hot topics over the past couple of years, the current master plan doesn't address solar, doesn't address self-organization. The current ma, the master plan is supposed to take the community's opinion on how the town is supposed to be developed. So, there was a lot of opinion around new projects that got the votes. And the planning board had nothing to go by except for the votes that show up to the planning board here, or planning board here. So, how we went out and asked them and actually get community input and to find out what the town wants to see in certain areas, that's basically what the master plan, you haven't had an update to what the town wants to see in certain areas since 1980. So, that's really the reasons to get, is to get comments.
Alright, let's, uh, Dick, your hand is up first, and then I'll go.
I, I will point out that the, uh,
I, I will point out that the, uh, actually, the speaker over here said we should advertise this over 15, 20 years for the 130,000 dollars, and Jason said that we should be updating this every five years. I think that's what he said to the state.
Five to ten.
Five to 10 years. So there's a little discrepancy on how long this, this investment would be of any value.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that, I'm certain, um, talk about solar damage, it seems like the town did vote and put a mile in regards to solar damage, did they not?
Yeah.
So if we can do that as a town at an ill-leaded basis, why can't we do it on anything else? The town has shrunk in population in 40 years. Why do we need a newer plan? If anything, maybe we should go back to the plan before.
All right, I'm seeing a few, okay? Let's, uh, young lady, please.
The gentleman that is most knowledgeable about the need for master plans, sir, what is your expertise? Because if you were hearing her votes about what it was going to do for us, I have lived here approximately 18 years, and I have come to understand we want to keep our town a little town, which is nice. We're not, we're not looking to have industry planning if we're talking about that, and not in service of special meaning. So what do you do, sir? What do you have?
What do I do? I was previously consultant, and the reason I know about master plan is I served as the chairman of the master plan committee in Loveville, when I lived there, 30, 30 years ago.
Okay.
So that's the only reason I have any, any experience with master plan, to do the process itself. And it's not something, it's not something that can quite be important to take on. It really, it was a two-year process, 50 persons committee. It's not something that a volunteer or can take on without, from a profession.
Okay. Um, let's, let's grab one more. Let Garrett, I have.
Um, I guess my concern and more question with the planning board is that anybody involved in the state and what they're doing with zoning and regulations on the state level, does this master plan, and play into the fact that the states aren't going to be able to utilize it to force different changes in the county, which we may not want, where they will take that master plan, put together by consultants who obviously have state backing and knowledge of what the state wants when it comes to master plan? I'm just very concerned that maybe we do need an update, but I would hope that there's enough people in this community that can do that kind of planning, love spending that kind of money, bringing in outside consultants.
Ted, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move a question. I think we've had enough debate on it. This, wait a minute, you know what? I'm actually seeing it differently. Young lady with the blackboard.
I just have one question. With the master plan, the master plan, you're proposing 132,000 dollars roughly. This is just to bring it to current, and you're grabbing at the end, updating every five to 10 years. What would it cost to update it, where the act is, this is what I'm asking.
I was, I was, I was still one on the update.
So I'm just gonna, if you guys have given us spend 132,000 dollars to update this, and I couldn't agree it's 40 years old, but from there, we need to continually update every five to 10 years, and what is the expense from there?
Yeah, I do understand the question, I'm not sure the answer, but it's actually the point that Mr. Patel made. I really want to move this controversy, we're getting a lot of questions. Robin, hold on. Um, let's take, we'll take three more, all right, because it's, there are different hands coming up. Let's, Robin, go.
All right, Robin, I just want to say that I remember that master plan, honestly, I was probably not the committee who developed it, and I totally agree with Gary that there's enough people in town to be committed with, you know, help. I used to work with, I have valid training that I was on, I stuck in there. And that was very effective, and there is enough people, and I loved it in regards to, to the master plan. I agree with it, we probably do it without.
Okay, before we go to town, we're gonna go to Cliff.
I can appreciate that the state says we should upgrade every five years. This budget here, that we voted on earlier, is full of things that the state is making us pay for. Not suggesting we do it, making us pay for it. They're suggesting we do this. I'm not in the idea of funding suggestions.
Thank you, Cliff. And this will be the last one, you have a job.
Being previously on the planning board, uh, in reviewing the master plan previously, okay, one of the things it does is it makes recommendations to the town. Those recommendations would then be voted on at town meeting, okay? So it's going to be, you're going to spend some money upfront with a master plan, but eventually, those suggestions that come from the master plan would have to be voted on at this meeting or at a hall meeting. So the town would still have say as to how the money's spent. So going back to the question as to people, um, back in 83, 84, when they did the master plan or released it, there was more community involvement. One of the things that the consultants are looking for is community involvement. I'm not sure that you would still get the level of community involvement that you did that in the eighties.
Fair enough. All right, we're gonna move the question now, so we are at the point where it's time to vote. Now, this requires a majority vote?
I want to make a motion that we table this for another time. There's too much.
Is, you're gonna do that by this vote? It's a simple up or down vote. It doesn't mean it can be discussed again. So if it's a no vote, it's done, for the, for this amount of money. If it's a yes vote, it goes. So really, you're doing, as hard, in my opinion, as hard as tabling it, you have the option to defeat it or pass it. So let's, so we should look at, take the vote down. All those in favor? And all those opposed? Article 16, we have a citizen's petition. Before, before the, we take the motion, and before I read the one question, let me read the one question first, and then I just want to say something, and we'll go from there. This, this is a citizen's petition again, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5F, to create a receipts reserve for ambulance fund to defray the cost, including maturing debt and interest of acquiring, establishing, maintaining, purchasing, hiring, and operating ambulance services, or take any other action relative thereto. Let me just say, the question itself is only as to whether or not the community wishes to allow an accounting procedure to be introduced in that if at some point in the future, ambulance service is provided directly by the town and billed for, then those funds will have a place to go. So it's, it's, it's not a revolving fund, it's treated differently, but in essence, to make it simple, its behavior is roughly the same. I know there's going to be a, a motion and a bit of a presentation about this, I think there may be even a contrary position. Inasmuch as those discussions are really outside the total framework of the question, I'm going to allow it and some latitude in the interest that somebody's vote may be affected by what they hear, but keeping in mind, this is only about establishing an accounting procedure. That said, we'll now entertain the motion.
James Smith, Glendale Road, can everybody hear me, or should I use a microphone?
Jim, Mike. Microphone?
Okay, my name is James Smith, I live on Glendale Road in Hammond. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of MGL, or Chapter 40, Section 5F, to create a receipts reserve for ambulance fund to defray the cost, including maturing debt and interest of acquiring, establishing, maintaining, purchasing, hiring, and operating ambulance services.
Motion, we have a second. We have a second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommended negative action.
Negative.
The advisory committee recommended negative action. Uh, Jim, you have something you want to say?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, and for the town clerk, for the record, I used the wording on the article and not the wording on the white paper. About eight months ago, I volunteered and was appointed to the ambulance oversight committee, and upon accepting that nomination, I decided to delve into ambulance service both statewide and as it's provided in Hammond. And Hammond currently has a contract with a private provider, Action Ambulance, to provide 24/7 ambulance, advanced life support ambulance service with a single ambulance housed in Hammond. Sounds good, right? So why would we want to supplement that with ambulance transport from our fire department? Well, I quickly learned that there are multiple occasions each month when action ambulance is serving a Hammond resident, or is required by state law, serving a resident of another town, and that there's another ambulance dispatch that occurs. Here's an example of the above. About two months ago, an elderly person fell and was injured at a business on Main Street. The fire department responders were there just a couple of minutes, but that person, but the action ambulance was out on a service call with another resident. So that person had to wait in, in pain for approximately 15 more minutes for an ambulance to come from another town in a mutual aid. Imagine if that was a life-threatening situation. There are also occasions when multiple ambulances are needed at the same time. For example, that well-published accident that was down here in Main Street last February, where they had dispatch ambulances from multiple towns. The Hammond Fire Department has ambulance that was purchased in May 2020 with donated funds. The purchase was approved by the Board of Selectmen as reflected in their minutes of May 11, 2020. A few months later, the ambulance was inspected and certified. That was also approved by the Board of Selectmen as reflected in their minutes on, on August 31, 2020. Yet the fire department ambulance sits unused. That is the impetus for this article. The article was written by me, was obtained, intended, required signatures to get it on town meeting. I'm passionate about this because we can provide better service, supplemental service. This is not, this is not to take away from what we're currently getting. If this article is approved, as the moderator mentioned, it does not automatically start fire department ambulance service. That would be a decision of the Board of Selectmen and town meeting to provide the appropriate budget. Some logistics, to keep it simple, and to walk off, the Board of Selectmen could allow the fire department to provide ambulance transport services limited to Monday to Friday first shift when we have responders in the fire station, uh, ready and able to go, and they do respond when there are situations to come. Hard to flip paper, the microphone. I'm trying to keep this short, folks, but there's a lot of pieces to it. A little bit on the finances. Average municipal basic life support ambulance transport billing in our part of the state is $2,000 per transport. The cost of the fire department to provide that service will be approximately two call back firefighters, $20 an hour for two hours, that's $80. Replenishment of supplies, like bandages, oxygen masks, et cetera, maybe $100, maybe a little more. Faculty ambulance mileage, I use $30 a mile, that's three times the standard IRS rate for cars. So 30-mile round trip, that's going to be about $60, so about $250 for us to provide that service. I brought this matter up in public meetings, and at the RIS advisory committee hearing a few weeks ago. There are several concerns that were addressed, and if you can just bear with it for a couple more minutes, I'm gonna address those concerns and let, let people express their, their thoughts. Concern one, if the fire department does transports, that will negatively impact our contract with action ambulance and possibly reduce any year-end revenues. That is not going to happen. Action ambulance will always be the first ambulance dispatched. The only time ambulance will be allowed to be dispatched is when action ambulance is not available and their backup ambulance is not available. Number two, when we need a second ambulance, we can just call for another ambulance that are mutual aid. Reference back to my issue the other day, about a couple months ago, where that person fell and had to wait in agony. Though our fire department personnel are only capable of basic life support transport, that is correct, but all certified ambulances are capable of ambulance, of advanced life support transport. The difference is the personnel and medications. As is frequently done, even at times with action ambulance, the patient is picked up by basic life support and transport is started, and then there is an intercept with a paramedic that has the medications and the necessary certificates of knowledge to provide ALF support, and that ambulance becomes an advanced life support ambulance. The ambulance will be open the door to the fire department, becoming a full-time ambulance Doing that would require a town meeting vote to establish budget for that, and would require approval by the Board of Selectmen. Keep in mind, there are Monday to Friday daytime firefighter services.
Point of order. Yes, sir.
The motion is, whether it's created or failed.
Correct.
The speaker is talking about things way down the road. I've nothing to add.
I'm addressing issues that have been brought up previously at hearings and other venues.
Hold on one second. So I did say that we grant some latitude, because it may have a bearing on how some folks will vote, but we do need to step it up.
Okay, I have one more page.
Just one more. Jim, just one more example.
Okay. This will open the door to the Hammond Fire Department becoming a full-time ambulance service. Uh, doing that would require a town meeting vote to establish the budget and approval by the Board of Selectmen. Keep in mind, that our Monday to Friday daytime firefighters that we established seven years ago, we still have that standing Monday to Friday staff. We have not expanded it to a full-time service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got the motion, we've got a second, we've got the first, we've got the first hot discussion. Is there any questions or any other discussion? Again, keeping in mind, as I said when it started, as pointed out by Selectmen Downing Board, this is only about the introduction of the county line. It is not about whether or not we are going to have service. Allowed some latitude, I don't want, maybe it's a little longer than it should, but just in case it might influence somebody's decisions, why I did it. Any other questions or discussion? I see one. Down.
Tommy Hatchmil wrote, Chair of the Ambulance Oversight Committee, and I just want to make this perfectly clear, that this is not a recommendation of the Ambulance Oversight Committee. Following that, I do have a question for you, Mr. Moderator, and I'd like to know if a town treasurer or a town accountant, what they think for a necessity of such an account. And secondly, I'd like to know, do the Selectmen have a position on this article, and do they see a necessity for it?
Okay, so the questions, we'll start, before we go to the Selectmen, we'll go to our treasurer and our town accountant.
I appreciate Jim trying to use this tool to bring the whole ambulance issue. I think that starting this fund is really putting the cart way before the horse. There's no way that responsible officials would get into the ambulance business without a thoroughly vetted operating budget, understanding how the thing is going to operate. There's no mechanism to collect any fees, so this gave Jim a nice platform to discuss the, the fact that we probably should look at this for ambulance service. I don't think there's any reason to vote in favor of this.
Town accountant, please.
Yeah, it's a, it's a concern for me. I appreciate Jim's passion, what, from my home. I think they can agree with, thank you, Jim. I appreciate Jim's passion for this, but I have a concern, all right? I have used the ambulance three times in the last year, and I'm very pleased with the results. I've also gotten my Medicare statement, as to how much was charged and how much Medicare paid. And if I didn't have supplemental insurance, I'd have been paying an awful lot of extra money. So my question would be, all right? So my question would be, all right, if the town was faced with that situation for a service they provided me without and got only the Medicare amount, how are they going to collect the money from me? Are they gonna, are they gonna go after my house? Are they gonna, what are they gonna do? So that's my concern. I'm concerned that we put people in a position after the fact. He wished that I really afford this ambulance and I call. I don't think that's fair.
And the last thing we had was your second question was from, something from the selectmen, comment on the selectmen.
What's the selectmen? Do you have a position on this article and do they see a necessity for it?
Entertain, this is petition which is, is right.
Yep, okay. So when the selectmen's answer on this is, they have not discussed this nor had a, have a formal position on it as a board yet, but, very important, very important, this is a citizen petition request, and that's what town meeting is for. The selectmen absolutely did the right thing by allowing the question. They do not necessarily have to have a position at this time. So I saw some frustration, but just know this was done right by them. I really want to get to the vote, so let's, we'll do, you in the back, sir, please. You have, send it online.
Richard Hughes, we need to drive. I was wondering if it would be appropriate to ask fire chief his opinion on this situation because it's going to directly impact his department and how they operate.
Okay, so I understand and appreciate the question, but now we're really starting to get much further afield. This again is a question about establishing an accounting procedure, not about whether we're going to have ambulance service. Robin, I'm gonna, because we're really starting to kind of just take sides on the ambulance operation, which is not what the question is for. If you defeat the question, it's done, and then they can come back and have another discussion or approach it again. So I'm the moderator, at my discretion, I'm moving the question. This requires a majority vote in order to establish the accounting procedure. All those in favor, all those opposed, the motion fails. We are now on to Article 17, Fiber Optic Program Borrowing, to see if the town will authorize the treasurer to borrow a sum of money or to continue the program to build a townwide fiber optic system or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, remove the town taking no action on this article.
Motion made.
You jumped on, you jumped on. Article 17, yes.
Wrong 17. There's, hold on one second. Let's address that. There are a couple of warrant questions. There was a warrant question that was withdrawn. Yep, so the HW RSD capital question was withdrawn. I think that, now the warrant had to be reposted on the town website. I think the initial warrant that was there may have had that question, but it was reposted, so we are on track. Okay? All right.
Mr. Moderator, remove the town taking no action on this article.
So we have a motion and a second to take no action. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory committee recommends favorable action.
For no action?
For no action.
All right, so we have, so we have a motion, a second. I believe the fiber optic folks do want to make a bit of a presentation, so.
All right, I just want to give a brief overview of what we've been doing the last year or so with our fiber optic exploration in town. Some of you may remember, the last two town meetings, we went to vote for establishing an MLP in town, which we've done, and it's required by the state in order to explore fiber optics. After that, we then received a $250,000 community impact grant to start the exploration process with Whip City. With their help, we've been able to complete or near completion of Phase One with 100% grant funding. Whip City is here just to give a short presentation now, and what our hopes are is that with this presentation, it'll give residents an opportunity to think of questions and come to some of our community impact sessions that we're going to have in the future. We're going to try to establish some outreach programs just to gain more input and get the knowledge out there of what's going on. But I just want to give them the floor now, just to kind of give a brief overview of what's been happening in town.
Thank you, Chris. Can everyone hear me okay? Don't worry, I know it's late at night, and Brian and my team in the back will say, I like to be bold, be brief, and be gone. So first off, just introductions, I'm Katrine Ferter, I'm the Director of Customer Service and Sales, and I've been at West New Gas Electric, Whip City Fiber since the beginning, and I've been at the company for nine years. And we have Brian Sullivan, who's the liaison for the town of Hampden, who we've been engaged with for the last two years through Bob Marble and Craig with the help of Pam as well. And then in the back, we do have Andrew Short, Jamie Cincato, who's our Fiber Foreman Supervisor, and then Jane, who's in Customer Service. So we're just going to do a brief overview of the benefits of the Fiber to the Home Network and who we are. We can go to the next slide. Oh, sorry. So West New Gas Electric is a municipal, so they're... No, sorry. Sorry. So we are, is this okay? Okay, thank you. So we are a municipal as well as the town of Hampden, so there is a benefit of municipals to municipals. And at our company, we have over 18,500 electric customers as well as 15,000 Whip City Fiber customers in 19 communities. So basically, we work with towns and advise them how to build their own network, so it would be an asset to the town of Hampden. So right now, we're currently going through the design and engineering, we're not yet, sorry, the main ready pole application that Craig I mentioned for the submissions, so we can attach fiber to the poles. Proceed. And then Hampden has 64.2 miles, 7.10 miles of underground distribution, and we've actually batched 16 pole applications through National Grid as well as Verizon. And you can proceed to the next one? Yes, and then, so you can proceed to the next one. Sorry, we have some extra ones. Oh, this is perfect. So for the last seven years, we've partnered with 19 communities, as I had mentioned, for a turnkey solution. So what that means is we do design and engineering, customer service, IT, construction, and through the pandemic, there really is a benefit of fiber to the home. As many of you know, during the pandemic, you had to work remotely, or some of you might have had students at home, or if you're a doctor, sending files is a great value for fiber to the home. We actually currently are engaged with the town of West Springfield as well, so we have a 10-year agreement with the town of West Springfield, and we've been approached by your neighbors, East Long Meadow, because this really is the future. And then we also engage with the town of Southwick, and then Southampton as well has reached out to us. And then you can see the footprint. But basically, something we want to emphasize is it's your network, the town of Hampden's network, and we just work through the process. The only thing that we own is the router and the home, but we would work through that entire process with you folks. I don't get too much into the detail, but what we're trying to do is build trust with the town of Hampden, because we are, we want to be your trusted partners through the entire process. So with that being said, we would have multiple information sessions to teach everyone how to cut the cord, how to stream, because this is internet-only as well as phone-only. You can move to that, thank you. So short and sweet, but we are, we are happy to be here, and thank you for inviting us.
So again, the issue, the vote here is to take no action, but we simply wanted to afford the fiber optic folks to let you know what's been going on. As you remember, at two prior town meetings, we had secret ballot as to whether or not to establish the core for having our own fiber optic network for our community. Those votes were both successful. This is part of the next steps in that process. As of now, there's no borrowing or no request for funds, raise appropriate borrow, there's, it's simply just allow the opportunity to have the report heard. So our vote right now is to take no action on this article. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of no action? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Article 18, Senior Center Design Funding, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from unappropriated available funds, assemble money to fund the design of an expansion project for the Hampden Senior Center or take any other action relative thereto. Who's making that motion? I haven't. Bottom.
My name is Don Collins, from 721 Main Street in town. I would like to report.
Tom, hold on. First, we need your motion. I believe it's going to be no action, so you can give a brief overview. So we need a reason to introduce the article. So I believe your motion is for no action. You can't be trusted with that, they're going to take it away from you next time.
I move that the town vote to take no action on this article.
We've got a motion, a second. Again, I know the night gets long, but this is an opportunity to just have an overview come from these folks. They are not asking for any funds right now. This will be a no action vote, simply an opportunity for you to hear where they are.
Okay, I would like to report, in the background and notification of upcoming plans in the Hampden Senior Center building, 2019, the Council on Aging, the board of the Senior Center, requested that the selectmen take a study on the current future needs of the 23-year-old senior center building. The selectmen appointed a senior center building committee consisting of 10 community members and contracted with EDM, the design firm, to do a feasibility study. The building committee has meant two times a month in the past five months to review, critique, and modify this preliminary plan and to consider looking at the needs for the center for the next 25 years, whether it would require renovation or possible addition. The review is still ongoing. Tonight, we entered, received a survey that we're asking you to, we're trying to collect input from the town on what we should undertake, consider in looking at this plan. Once the study is finalized, a request will be made at a future town meeting for funds for the final design, which could improve, could be approved with drawings, architectural designs. Once the final plan, design is completed, a request will be made at another future town meeting for funds to fund this plan. No funds are requested or required tonight at this time. The report is merely to inform the council people that this ongoing project can be solicited here.
Are there, again, this is to hear the report. Does anybody have any questions, or are we prepared to move to the vote to take no action? Looks like we're prepared for the vote. All those in favor of taking no action? Are there any opposed? I'll show her it. Article 19, Article 19 is a very long article. I'm not going to read the entire article, simply the introductory part, but I would expect or hope that someone from the planning board will be able to provide a summary as to what is being asked of the town to consider here and for the motion. So Article 19 is to see if the town will vote to amend the Hampden zoning bylaws as follows or take any other action. Somebody from the planning board, I believe, is on this motion.
The ladies are giving.
Well, there you are.
I moved that the town vote to amend the Hampden zoning code by first adding subsection three, the text of which is set out in the warrant, to subsection 6.11 of section 6.1, and then adding to section two definitions, a new definition 2.1, the text of which is set out in the warrant, then remembering section two as a part.
And motion, we've got a second, it's the zoning bylaws. Would you like to give a brief overview, please, of what you're hoping to accomplish here?
Just as a list and a summary, basically, we're providing an opportunity for an owner of a single-family home to assist families by allowing use of rooms in a single-family residence as an accessory partner, so more or less involved partners.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm very concerned about this. It's going to allow people to take advantage, turn it into a two-family home, charge rent to those people. I don't see how it can be enforced regarding the kind of vague, you can see people coming both through it and doing what they want to do, and I don't see how it can be a damage to town or property values will go down with these two-family homes. I just do not like the idea of this.
Yes, sir, fact.
Fact, but I'm certain, to me, this sounds like someone said earlier something that the state is shoving down our throat. Why, why would anybody want to do this?
Okay, is that a question? Is that, that sounds very rhetorical.
Yeah, why would anybody want to do this?
So has the planning board been approached? I mean, what, the history here?
No, we were not approached by the state for this. It's just something that we decided to take action on to provide the opportunity for people to help out with families.
Have people asked for this?
I'm sorry.
Have residents asked for this?
Well, I've been on the planning board, we have not been approached by anyone requesting a second residence on their home.
But nobody living in town has asked for it. So.
Okay, so Dick.
I mostly don't actually do much, I'm not just doing promotion and takes care of the checkbooks, I've also been 25 or 30 years on the zoning board appeals. Obviously, from my disagreement with the planning board earlier, we don't interact a whole lot around the same page. When I read this bylaw, I was a little bit skeptical about it, so I started digging into it a little bit. I understand it's a pretty close copy to the one that's been effective in Wilberham, so the wording has been vetted on it. It is an imperfect bylaw, however, the current situation is there are people running mother-in-law apartments without any control whatsoever. By enacting this bylaw, you're allowing the planning board to have some tool, to have oversight into how these are used and how they'll transition. We all know people who've got illegal apartments in their house right now, and the planning board has no way to get to it. The best parallel I can see was when we put in the home occupation rule, people were running home occupations if they could get away with it without anybody complaining. By putting in a home occupation bylaw, it gave a tool for people to actually apply for a permit to do it, and now we know who's got it, and we've got some oversight. They will have to, in order to get an apartment, an in-law apartment, they will have to ask permission. That puts them on the record of what family member is there. I know it's an imperfect law, but I think it's an improvement in the process, because it's happening now, and we have no control over it.
Before we go any further, because I know there's another question, I did, I did error. The planning board, you have a recommendation with this motion, it's your motion, but it's advisory, the planning board also makes a recommendation, is my understanding.
You're in favor of it?
It's usually that simple. Every now and then, there can be a split vote, and it files a...
Advisor recommends favorable action.
So we've got, we've got, oh, all right, now I know there's another question. Jeff.
It's not so much a question, a little history. I've been on, I was on the planning board quite a while ago. 13 years ago, when I first got on the planning board, this had come up, this issue had come up, and the planning board did not take action on it at that time. This is, as Mr. Vitello had said, it's not a perfect bylaw. I've been in contact with the zoning enforcement officer in Wilberham, and it does take some effort to enforce it. They've been doing this for a long, long time. Our bylaw, the bylaw that's here tonight, mirrors that, mirrors that, if you will, bylaw in Wilberham. So there is, there will have to be somebody that makes sure... So there is, um, there will have to be somebody that makes sure that this is a bylaw.
I, yes, sir, let's go with one more. Go ahead.
So if we're going to go forward with this, where are the bugs to enforce this point of common?
The building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer for the town.
But we're not able to enforce those people that, I heard somebody say, that there are existing ones that we know, I don't know, but I heard it said that they know there's apartments in the building, that we're going to allow people to make a separate side door in terms of that, so that's to the right for the people, granting all these apartments. I'm just very concerned about that.
Serenon. Any, okay, any other questions? One in the back, go ahead.
This is not an eligible or adequate or medical looking policy.
I do not believe that they're addressed in the zoning change. And I'm sorry, can we get your name to the record, please?
Heather Beatty.
All right, so, all right, um, let's, one more, please.
Yes, I'm Heather Beatty, and I'm also on the planning board, and I just want to mention another part of this bylaw that might put some people's minds to rest, and that is when there's a transfer of property from one to another with a sale, there's a requirement in the bylaw that says the owner of the current, um, single-family home that has such an accessory apartment will file, um, on a subject property, a declaration of covenants. So this is a legal document, it is the registry of deeds, and this will follow the home through any purchases, any sale and purchase, and therefore be able to allow us to track when such a home is sold. And at the time of the sale, if the new owner does not remove the cooking facilities for this accessory apartment, which is the really fundamental thing that makes it an accessory apartment, they will not be issued the same covenants, so they would have to come back to the, to the planning board to get a new one. So there, if you read the bylaw carefully, there are a lot of checks and balances, shall we say, and a lot of consideration into creating a bylaw that promotes the single-family appearance of the home, and does not make it look anything like a, a two-unit house. There, it's limited to just two bedrooms, limited in square footage, there are many, many limiting requirements. And as has been mentioned, people are already doing this, and this is a bylaw revision that is looking to the future, so that we can promote the single-family appearance and function of our town, given the economic hardships that so many people have these days.
Okay, um, John Flynn would like to make a comment.
I was on the planning board for a number of years, just like John was, and I can say that I think every year, I had that same comment. My mother-in-law wants to move in with me, what do I do? Oh, you're suffering enough already, you don't need to come to the board with regulations. But this does provide that opportunity for the homeowner to get value back in their home, actually the town to assess that value, and protect the investment they have, and to do it right. Heather said a hundred percent, the safeguards are in the bylaw. The other ones on zoning bylaws, as Don will tell you, having done it for a number of years, they're not in granted. If something you think needs to be tweaked, they're back here next year, closing that deal. They're going to get it right, but this is going to help a lot of people's lives. Your daughter wants to move home with her kids, you need to help her out. It's a family thing. Sure, you're a hundred percent right, we're not looking for rental properties, we're not looking for, all of a sudden, your mother-in-law is there, she moves out, a couple college kids come in, they're throwing a kegger every night. The protections are there for the zoning enforcement officer, to stay on top of that.
Well, you told me that if my mother-in-law was sick, I would not be able to bring her to live in my home, because I haven't actually a bedroom.
That's living in, but if she wants a little independence, you can make it like an own little area. Maybe she wants a kitchenette, because she wants to be independent per se. This would allow that.
Just seeing me having to have family members live with you, why do you need separate areas, separate cooking, separate services?
Every family is, every family is. Yeah, that's okay. All right, um, I think we're there. Connie, can we be brief?
Yeah, I have a few problems with this. I, I agree with the in-law apartment, but not if there are cooking facilities, and you want a microwave, that's fine. If it's family, you can eat your meals together. A lot of these are older people, maybe forgetful, probably not still, I think we're going to have to provide-
All right, everybody, let her finish.
I'd say two bedrooms, and two bedrooms would probably require a whole reception system. That's, you know, maybe one, maybe you could open three, four, but this is too much. There are some problems that just don't like to see them addressed before we do something.
So part of the bylaw is that they have to go through the board to help.
If, if we're going to have something new, we'll have some more conversation, but we don't need to re-ask.
Yeah, Rick, you want to respond, or you say this?
Oh, I'm sorry. So if a new subject is required for accessory apartment, that's on with homeowners expenses, so is there a choice to inform them?
Okay, thanks, Connie. Sorry about that, didn't watch it through the questions. Let's, there's a young lady, um, nope, right next to Heather Beatty.
Christina Verder, also on the planning board. I just strongly encourage folks to really bring this through, and after sitting here now, there are many safeguards, like you mentioned, for a lot of these concerns, it is up to the department, you know, the board to help, to go through the water supply, which just pulls the facilities, it's all in there. Safeguards to continue the appearance of a single-family home, where entrances are. We really thought this out, and I don't know if anybody was on the phone or in attendance, but when we went through this language, we combed through it as best we could to make sure that this is something that helps out residents within the community, and is not an opportunity to have any family or anything of that nature. It really tried to address the safeguard of all these concerns, and I truly believe they are already known in here, and I know it's very wrong, but that's, that's beneficial to us, it's, it's very beneficial.
Something new, ten more. Sure, one quick thing.
Ten human sessions, guys. If you remember, we just turned down the master plan, and in our statement of turning it down, we said that we would enforce our zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw enforcement, offset no matter.
All right, all right. This requires a two-thirds vote, as it is a change to the zoning, so let's take a look at the vote first. All those in favor? Any opposed? The two-thirds is declared. Article twenty, easement agreement with National Grid. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen for and on behalf of the town on such terms and conditions, as the board deems to be in the best interest of the town, to convey to Massachusetts Electric Company, known as National Grid, a perpetual right easement to construct, reconstruct, repair, maintain, operate, and patrol for the transmission of high and low voltage electric current, and for the transmission of intelligence on overhead system lines, fires, and cables, and poles together, with all equipment and occurrences thereto said transmission, installed over, across, under, and upon a portion of the town-owned land located at Cross Road, and identified as tax ID parcels nineteen dash eight five dash zero, and nineteen dash eight six dash one, to serve the town's property and others, and others, and be authorized, the board of selectmen to take any and all action necessary for the purposes of accomplishing such easement conveyance, which is approximately shown on attachment A of this annual town meeting warrant, or take any other action you want to do there. Good job. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen as stated in Article twenty of the warrant, or May eighth, two thousand twenty-three annual town meeting, for the approximate location of easement shown in attachment A, being updated by the approximate location shown in exhibit B, as provided in this town meeting. So we've got a motion, we have a second? Motion, second. Does the advisory committee have a recommendation?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Okay, is there any discussion? Gary?
I have just a question, probably, for the town council. Under that, the easement agreement, if they strip a hole in the ground and poke through our liner that we've got over there, are they responsible for the repair of that liner?
Well, every hole location is being checked, and it has to be included, like, to avoid exactly that problem, and so, um, with respect to liability, I would assume that, you know, that could be a term, that could be included in the decree, and the terms and conditions is better than the selectmen.
Any other questions or discussion? Connie?
The town board, it's DJ, the transfer station-
We can't hear you, Connie.
Okay, the, uh, the transfer station has one of the most wonderful views in the whole Hamden. I like it better than the one in Echo Park. It's wonderful, it's in our whole space plan, as a wonderful system for us to work on. We have lost that replacement of the solar system, because already, I don't know if you saw this, but I already do, and I don't know if you're lucky or sorry.
Connie?
And then, if we're going to put these transition-
Connie!
Yes.
I have to stop you, you're outside the bounds of the question.
Okay, I, I'm trying to get to that.
Okay, and quicker, please.
These lines are being put underground, I don't remember this being in our county that we did, though, to have solar, and I have recorded. But if there is any way that these lines can go underground, and just maybe save all those that are in here, and we could have stopped all of our minds, I would really, I, I think that should be done if it can.
Okay, Connie, sorry for the abruptness, but I just, I'm lying in the back, and we have to stay on point. Any other questions? I see John asked, just one quick one. If approved, will be planned, go to the planning board for their bylaw, that's all. If we approve it, this plan should go to the planning board to go into the bylaw rule? So I would have said they will make sure that all necessary filings are executed upon approval. Okay, that, I get it. Okay, um, anything else? Now, this is important, this involves ton out town-owned land, so this is also going to, this is going to require a two-thirds vote, because again, it is our property. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-one, funding for Hamden's one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary events. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to prepare for activities surrounding one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, the founding of the town of Hamden in eighteen seventy-eight, or take any other action relative thereto. The motion. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-four, section five oh three I, to raise an appropriate ten thousand dollars to fund the celebration of twenty twenty-eight of Hamden's one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary as an independent town. We, uh, we have a motion, we have a second. There, so you're good, advisory?
Advisory committee recommends favorable action.
No, we're not going to second any of them. All right, anybody have any question? I mean, I think it's someone self-explanatory, or one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary is coming up. I think he said ten thousand.
Ten thousand. We're going to accumulate some every year, probably a little more as it comes along. For those who were around in nineteen seventy-eight, you saw it on the cover of the Town Report, we had a pretty good celebration in Thirdburg, especially the school, fireworks, the whole thing. Rick, you were around that, remember? So we're looking to do the same type of thing, but we have to start now, involve in one year. We'll start putting a little away, a little away, and then, we'll be looking for people to serve on the anniversary committee.
Ten thousand dollars a year until twenty-eight?
Oh, probably more. Fireworks aren't cheap.
Well, you said ten thousand.
We're starting at ten thousand, probably a little more a year.
This year, okay, this year.
See anybody volunteer?
Not yet.
No.
Is there, what, I'm sorry, was there a, here, comment? Robin, go.
I just have a comment, because, you know, ten thousand, that's, it's a great idea, we're all going to, hopefully, we'll be around in, in four years. People are living on limited budgets, you know, I don't know what to advise, but I just, I think, it's a great idea, I think.
I don't know what to say.
It's a lot of money, it's a lot of money, you've already been putting out a lot of money, a lot of people have been, people are trying to retire, um, I just think it's a lot of money.
All right, everyone.
We've had a meeting here for four years, lived at the bottom of their own heart.
Any other questions or comments? And John's going to keep whacking me in the back until you all know that they need volunteers. So, that said, motion is for ten thousand dollars, raise it appropriate, it's a majority vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-two, assessors funding for state mandated programs. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to meet the requirements of the Massachusetts Department of Revenue mandated programs, or take any other action relative thereto. Sorry, favorite word, mandated.
Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate sixteen thousand dollars to the assessors department for fiscal twenty twenty-four, Massachusetts Department of Revenue mandated requirements.
We have a second, a motion and a second for sixteen thousand dollars. Advisor?
Advisory recommends favorable action.
Are there any questions to the assessors on this? Robin?
Sorry.
It's okay, it's what we're hearing.
I just, I mean, we have afforded assessors, we already have one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, one hundred percent of that, for, in that purpose, what is this expense that's not covered, I would want from already?
So, why is this separate expenditure?
Right.
Yep.
It's a word called, we spend every year, we have consulting firms that are with us, every year we have to supply a certain amount of funds a day. The budget can exhaust one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars, that's primarily our internal budget, that would work with, but on every year, we will take a separate word article to pay off the bills and things to hire.
So, the principal assessors, they don't go around assessing, they hire themselves?
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Dick?
One of the reasons is outside of the budget. If you remember, we used to have an assessor's table, they'd, we put money in, put money back out, and we, this is actually a more streamlined process. The problem that they have is they don't exactly know how much they're going to spend, and our fiscal year ends July first, their assessing project goes basically February through October, so they were having a real problem matching those funds, when anything they spent by July first, they couldn't have anymore. So that's why we fund it as a separate article, so it gives them flexibility as far as the calendar dates they spend the money.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Article twenty-three, school resource officer. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available fu, unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to fund school resource officer for FY two thousand twenty-three at Minichaw Regional High School, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars to fund the school resource officer for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three at Minichaw Regional High School.
Second. Motion and a second to raise and appropriate. Advisory?
Advisory recommends favorable action. Advisory recommends favorable action.
This is a question we see every year on the warrant. That said, are there any questions from the floor? Ted?
23. Yes.
Yes, it's, it's always backward. Every, yeah, it's for in the year, based on the hours the officer puts in, and they don't know that when the year starts, so it's always billed. Fair enough. Any other questions? Another majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Advisory Committee Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriably available funds a sum of money to the Advisory Committee Reserve Fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for the Advisory Committee Reserve Fund.
Got a motion, we got a second, how do you feel about your own motion?
Fabulous, you recommend favorable action.
Any questions? Peter?
What are the funds for?
The, these are, uh, funds that we can use for extraordinary or unforeseen expenses that happen throughout the year, um, to support other departments. So we, some years we don't spend any of it, and some years we do need to utilize it if we have some unforeseen expenses.
Example, please.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead. We just can't have it shouted out, so, go ahead.
You're asking for $25,000 this year, and so I want to expect that you're going to be asking every year for something, but I, you're funding for unforeseen things, well what have you used these months for last year?
So we will, um, I'm not sure we even, did we use any last year? I don't think we did, but in the past, if, if a department has a line item that's overrun, say for utilities that they weren't expecting, then they would come at the end of the fiscal year and reconcile those accounts and ask for a line item transfer out of this reserve account into their account. So it's to support, um, the, you know, the town's expenses when things have, um, you know, gone south, and they haven't had, they've had expenses they didn't anticipate at the time that they put their budget in.
What I can argue is as, when I was on the Board of Selectmen in years past, if you, if we had a year where it became unseasonably cold, and maybe it might be the senior center or another town building, their, their utility cost was higher than anticipated because of the cold snap, this, this creates the fund available to supplement that budget, and that's why some years it doesn't give us enough.
I have a question.
Uh, Robin.
Sorry, if it's not used, where does that fund, does it go back into the general standards, the obligation fund? If it's not used?
It, it becomes part of free cash, because it's not expended.
Is there any way we can transfer money from the other account to cover that instead of creating an obligation or action?
Let's go to the treasurer.
Sometimes that's a possibility, but what they all want to remind you is the reason that this money is entrusted to the advisory committee is the advisory committee is your, your agents for the town meeting to inform you. Everyone on stage works for the government. These are volunteers who, their main job is to analyze the budget and report to the town meeting, so that's why you trust them with this money and not the selectmen.
I just think it's a transfer, I mean, that's a part of what we have.
Sometimes that happens, but, you know, it's, it's, you can only, there's limits on which you can transfer. You can't transfer a police bill, uh, uh, money to play a police bill out of the fire department, say. You could possibly, when you happen to be somewhere within the same department, but, you know, if Academy Hall suddenly has a big electric bill, it happens, then that's where the money comes from, is out of there.
Yeah.
No, this is the tool we use.
So there are some line item transfers at the end of the year, but they have to be for within similar departments or similar purpose. This gives us more flexibility, and when we don't use it, again, it goes back to free cash. This is the only flexibility we have throughout the year to pay for any extraordinary expenses.
$25,000 on a $15 million budget is our flexibility.
Okay.
Can I, can I access that fund if my electric bill is tripled this winter?
You have to get behind me, so it doesn't lie. I'm with you. Um, no, it is.
No, this is just entered.
Within the town departments, within all those line items we just read in the budget.
And it does require advisory committee approval, it's not a free pass, so we, we are expected to, the town departments are expected to run their budgets within the numbers they're given, and this is unforeseen.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are on to Tony. Thank you, just about to throw that page away. General stabilization fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money or deposit them to general stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion.
I move that the town take no action on this article.
Second, we have a motion and a second to take no action on this article. Once again, how do you feel about what you're doing?
Favorable action.
So the advisory committee, and the motion is made and seconded to take no action on this article. Are there any questions? Peter?
How much money do they have?
This, hold on.
Every year they have, they got 1.1 million in the kitty.
So the stabilization account right now is at 2.13 million dollars.
So you've got the number?
I got the number.
I'm sorry, Peter?
Thank you.
Okay, just wanna make sure I didn't miss something else, thank you. Any other questions? So the motion and the second are to take no action on this article, it requires a majority vote, all those in favor of no action. Are there any opposed? The motion carries. I think we're into the home stretch. Yeah, no, you got one more, reducing the tax rate. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from unappropriated available funds or from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of reducing the tax rate for fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto.
I move that the town take no action on this article.
The motion's been made and seconded to take no action on this article.
Point of information?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect to the advisory committee and all the work they do as volunteers, as do you, I'm sure. It's come to my attention that after many years of ser, service, this is Carol's last night serving a town meeting on the advisory, and I think we owe her all thanks.
Thank you all very much, appreciate that.
Well, um, well, before, so you jumped the gun on the vote.
Oh, sorry.
You took away my opportunity to talk her out of the time. Oh, they're killing me. All right, hold on.
I was afraid.
Hold on, um, so we do have, this is the point where we do have to have discussion, if any, on the question to transfer to reduce the tax rate. Peter?
We've got over 200, there's too many dollars in the kitty, one of the 012 is using our taxes, they don't have a kid.
Advisory.
This is just not the right time for us to do that, Peter, that's what we typically take up at fall town meeting, when we have a sense of free cash, we have our stabilization, we know we're getting closer to setting the tax rate, so we would know how much we would need to use from any particular funds in order to mitigate the increase on the tax rate. So that's, we do that at, um, fall town meeting and not at annual town meeting.
Every year, we have 1,001.5, let's allow this road, and you put a little, nothing in the reduction in your taxes, something wrong.
That, that's actually not true, we just do it at a different time, not at annual town meeting, we do it at the fall town meeting.
You haven't done this meeting often?
Uh, not, since, I've been on here for 17, 18 years, and I don't really recall that happening in that timeframe. It's, it's the fall town meeting, is the timing that suits that, um, action best.
I'm gonna take the vote before, but, I'm gonna take the vote before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I have one thing to say, but first, the vote. The vote to take no action on the transfer to reduce the tax rate requires a majority vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Before we adjourn, a personal note, Carol Fitzgerald and I grew up together. She got out of high school in four years, I think it took me six, um, but I appreciated her looking back and checking on me. This town's been incredibly well-served by Carol, and the Diller family, which is her main name, is one of the finest families we've ever had, and have gen, generated their time to almost everything from Minichaw High Athletics, all the way to the library and the school at Green Meadows. They're a wonderful family, they're on par with the Burgers, and we're served by none better. Thank you. Motion carries. All those in favor? All right.